Good afternoon. Welcome to the Seattle School Board's Board of Director Legislative Meeting for September 4th, 2019, first day of school. And before we begin, we'd like to acknowledge and honor the First Peoples of the Puget Sound Territories by acknowledging that we are on land of the Coast Salage Tribes. Roll call, please. Director Gary?
Here.
Director Burke?
Here.
Director Harris?
Present.
Director Pinkham?
Here.
Director Mack?
Here.
Director DeWolfe?
Here.
And if everyone who chooses to would like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Given that it is the first day of school, we have no student performance today. Madam Superintendent, technical difficulties? The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. And welcome back to school. It was a great, great day. I'll talk about that in a bit. But before I start, I do want to welcome our new Chief Legal Counsel, Greg Narver, to our team. Greg is another great steel from the city of Seattle, and we're so fortunate to have his leadership and wealth of experience. So thank you, Greg, for joining us and being a part of the team. We get to have started this school with the launch of the Strategic Plan. Today, our tens of thousands of students entered our classrooms. Families shared their most valuable resource with us, their sons, daughters, grandkids, nieces, and nephews. And so we're so honored to have their trust in our system each and every day. The importance of this work is never lost on me. We help build the hopes and dreams of these families, and we have the obligation to do right by each of them. Their futures are counting on it, on us. As you'll know, these are the three areas of focus going into this year: third grade reading, welcoming environments, culturally responsive professional practice. We opened the doors to 104 schools across Seattle today. All, including the middle and high schools, have been charged with supporting the work to make certain that all of our third graders are reading at or above grade level by third grade. And this is a big lift for our district, but everybody's been asked to find their place in that goal. A team made up of central office and school staff worked all summer on start of school issues. And I want to thank Wyeth, Jesse, and Fred Podesta and their teams for their collaboration on this project. It's a huge, huge lift to make sure they're meeting every day. And it's just important to know that the silos in central office continue to come down around a lot of different types of work, particularly with this team, made up of staff from facilities, capital, transportation, HR, budget, school ops, CAI, all work through a punch list of over 100 items to make sure all classrooms were ready. All right, Nemo. They worked through a punch list of over 100 items to make sure all classrooms were ready for learning today. Members of this team are also responsible for opening Magnolia, Lincoln, Ingram, and Queen Anne. Thank you to all who helped create those spaces to ensure that learning could happen. I know a lot of you were at those ribbon cuttings. They were really awesome. Community turning out so happy about their new learning spaces. Our wonderful, oh, I've got to do this. Our wonderful Director of Nutrition Services, Erin Smith, all of you have seen, he's been getting some great accolades across the city, which means that we continue to hire the very best. He invited Fred Podesta and me to speak to his team as they prepared to greet students. Mr. Smith grounded in Nutrition Services Providers' Day of Training and Racial Equity and Welcoming Environments. I shared how important their role is to support our students' well-being, and Mr. Podesta expressed his gratitude to them for teaching students how to be and just be, like, in the lunchroom and with each other, which is just as important as knowing how to read. Their work is tied to the Strategic Plan. All staff across this district know that we must all find our place in that. And so I'm excited to see the changes Mr. Smith has planned for the upcoming school year. As you know, our educators returned to work this week. Gail Sellhorst, the Arts Manager, invited me and Parker, who is an eighth grader from Pathfinder, to kick off the event for all visual and performing arts teachers. And Parker was a super hard act to follow. Parker was there to talk about making sure that we are making transgender students visible in our system and the importance of that. Students like Parker continue to speak their truths, and we must listen, learn, and act. The rest of the day was focused on the Strategic Plan, including third grade reading. And throughout the day, Ms. Sellhorst grounded the work in racial equity, and I just want to thank Gail and her team as well. Now, one thing that I was fortunate to do last week was meet Superintendent Forbes Bottomley. He was the first Seattle Superintendent from Montana who served in Seattle Public Schools, and he served from 1965 to 1973. He's 98 years old. According to archives, he was confronting similar issues in 1968 that we are trying to address today in 2019. He and some teacher colleagues introduced a publication called "The Role of Racial Minorities in the United States." It was a book aimed to correct general ignorance about how people of color participated in and contributed to American society. The book was prepared specifically for the Seattle Public School District's desegregation program. Points developed in the book included the fact that an African American was the first to die in the Boston Massacre of 1770, and that 2,000 African Americans fought in the American Revolution. Dr. Bottomley said, "It is just the beginning, but it should be based, used by all teachers to supplement and correct the inadequacies of present courses and texts in recognition of the contributions of persons of all minority races." And so I just thought it was really phenomenal to sit down with him and hear his story and just reflect on the idea that we are still fighting these same fights, and even though we have a bold new strategic plan, these issues continue and that we are, you know, it's that true statement of "The arc of history is long." And here was a guy who was doing that similar work. And so it was just really nice to hear him and sit down with him and to kind of talk with a piece of living history. He has some good stories about Montana and his transition to Seattle as well.
And you'll be meeting with someone when you're 98?
Hopefully, I'll be 98 someday and still be able to meet with somebody. Someday. That concludes my remarks. Thank you, President Harris.
Okay, we are at Board Committee Reports. However, most of our committees reported out just a week ago, but perhaps the Chair of ANF can report on the quarterly audit meeting of yesterday, kind sir.
That I can. ANF did have their quarterly ANF meeting last night. Board members Gary, Mack, and Harris were in attendance. Appreciate President Harris definitely showing up. She's not on the assigned committee, but having her there to be part of the conversation is much appreciated. I want you to know that. During the meeting, we did have Andrew Medina, our internal auditor, present his internal audit update. We did say we had approved of that, but he did notice that, notify us that he will make some additions because he still wants to meet with some of those small cabinet members to look at some issues. But then again, as our finance committee members, we can accept any changes that he makes, and he'll present them to us, and we'll make sure we do that in the proper order that needs to be done. Most of the stuff that we discussed at the ANF were actually things that we're looking at closing. I appreciate all the work of our staff here at the John Stanford Building. Guess the one thing that, for me, that kind of stood out were still some ongoing issues about site councils, PTAs, PTOs. We're looking at addressing how the communication between those organizations and the schools that they work with go, making sure transactions are following proper protocols and procedures. And I see this hopefully leading to that we do have something that schools will know to follow, so we can track how funds sometimes flow into schools through those organizations, and again, for the benefit of everyone that's involved. We also had some discussion with, I'm sorry, blanking here, the issue that we're looking at, fiber optics, yes, and how we try, looking at the money coming in there, because we do get a credit through the Seattle, City of Seattle, and where does that credit go to and stuff? We are looking to get some more feedback on that, hopefully as soon as the October meeting to see what we can do with and making sure those funds are being tracked correctly. Others that just feel like are, again, the projects that we're closing out, some things that we feel that would need to be addressed, and the agenda's online. If there's anything that people have questions about, you know, it's public document, please look at it and make some comments.
Director Mack, you had some updates?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly touch on, we have our ops meeting tomorrow, and the agenda is now posted. There's a lot of construction bars coming through because we have a lot of work going on, which is great. But I also just wanted to mention that we're going to be having an update on the start of school, including current enrollment numbers, et cetera, so that'll be interesting, and also an update on how transportation went. And the initial report that I'm hearing is that we've had less than 1% late buses. So out of 600 and some odd buses, only seven were late this morning. And I know there's still, which is, this is huge success, and I'm super excited about that. It sounds like that we're not suffering from the same driver shortage we were before, and I'm sure, you know, I kept hearing on social media that there's little glitches where maybe people weren't catching the stop or just, you know, there's still glitches that folks are dealing with, but my understanding is that those are getting resolved through customer service and being handled really well. So I'm really, I just major shout out to our team for a great start of school with the buses. Additionally, tomorrow, we're going to be talking about the process and timeline for community engagement around student assignment and boundaries. So that'll give a context for the timeline for that process for the next school year. This one's already adopted, but it'll be for the next school year, and I think our goal is to adopt that, those by November. And we're also getting an update on the Advanced Learning Task Force and their work and how that ties into the student assignment planning around those topics. And additionally, just for FYI, there is a work session, two work sessions of the board related to both of those topics, advanced learning and student assignment transition and boundaries, on September 25th. And work sessions are here, they are public, but they don't have testimony provided, we don't have public testimony at those meetings. And also, brief update on legislative work that we are starting to talk about, our legislative agenda for the Seattle School District. Additionally, WASDA is having their legislative assembly. Both Jill and I plan to be there. That's in a couple weeks, on the 26th of September. And so we'll be moving forward on those things. Oh, it'll be coming, our legislative agenda will be coming through the Executive Committee in the October meeting. So if you're interested in that, that's where it'll be. Thanks.
Director Gary, please.
Okay, CNI's next meeting will be on September 10th, 4:30 to 6:30. A lot of the same things that we're still trying to finalize from last spring. We're going to be looking at a Board Action Report around the selection and adoption of instructional materials policy 2015. Yay, it's been a long time coming. I'm going to give a lot of thanks to Director Burke for his continued input and work, and the former Chief Kalakunoshida, who up until his very last day here helped to work on that policy, and of course, current Chief Deanna Backer. So it's been definitely a group effort to try and address many of the holes perhaps that we saw in our last adoption process, so that our next one will go more smoothly and everybody will feel that they participated and ultimately ruled upon a process that they believe in. So I hope that everybody will take a look at that closely and provide us their feedback any last minute, but it's coming for a vote, so hopefully that will be smooth sailing. Special attention items for the meeting will be the Summer Staircase Report, as Director Mack indicated, the Advanced Learning Update, and there's been a year and a half of hard work from the Advanced Learning Task Force around the recommendations that are being put forth. And so there's a lot of good information online to be presented in committee, and this is going to be something that is going to start being, we're going to start taking those, hopefully, taking those recommendations and seeing them put into action in our district in respect for all the work that has gone into that very important issue. I have presented a draft of the anti-racism policy to Keisha Scarlett, and so at this point, I don't want to make it public until we get some input from our experts, but that is also moving forward, and so I look forward to getting a draft that can be presented to everybody and get input on that. Our standing agenda items, the Strategic Plan Priority, High Quality Instruction Learning Experiences, we'll be talking about third grade reading levels and on-track graduation and college and career readiness. I did note that yesterday on KUOW that it was mentioned that that is part of our new strategic plan, but they seem to think that we weren't clear on our strategies on how to get there. So I hope that we, as a district, will put forth quickly to the media the strategies that I do know we have with regard to meeting our goal, because we need to be, as President Harris would say, loud and proud about the work that we're doing on our strategic plan. We'll be talking about graduation, college and career readiness, and then the instructional material updates will be the science instructional material adoption, how that is going forward. We're moving forward on ethnic studies and since time immemorial. And I know it feels like we keep saying the same thing over and over, but in order to do something well, we need to do it carefully, and they are moving forward, so hopefully we'll see those implemented at our schools. So I welcome anybody to come, listen, and provide feedback to the board through email as you see fit. Thanks.
Okay, last, the next Exec Committee meeting will be a week from today, September 11. Those are from 8:00 to 10:00, and at 10:00 o'clock, everybody gets up and leaves. We'll be talking about our SCA, Collective Bargaining Agreement, that will be coming back. We'll be talking about compensation for nonrepresented staff. We'll be talking about these happy legislative meetings, the timing of them, whether or not we reserve spaces for our 20 speakers for particular topics, how we identify student comments, and whether or not we ask our students to declare that they're, their comments, not someone else's written comments, that they have been assigned to speak of. And to address timing so that we don't have this big gap between when we start at 4:15, then we take a very long break, and we start our public testimony at 5:30, and try to give some balance to the difficulties of getting to the John Stanford Center at 4:15 in the afternoon, and given our happy construction out front, et cetera. And also to the folks that have worked here all day, and we don't want to keep them here till midnight. So lots of balancing to be done. And then our usual updates regarding community engagement, governmental relations, strategic plan, executive committee work plans, et cetera. And this becomes all the more important as we run into the transition period of the next board that will be seated in December 2019. So of interest, and again, in committees is where most of the mixing of the recipes is done. By the time it gets to the dais, many hands have touched it, and thoughtful, robust communication, sometimes rowdy, is had. So very much encourage your attendance at any community, committee meeting, and it's fascinating process if you appreciate public policy. We do not have a student give us comments this evening, so now we move to Romans 6, Business Action Items, A, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Approval of the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? This is just a simple request, not debatable. Director Pinkham?
Yes, I for one, actually, given that one of them was saying it's updated since introduction, I would like, hopefully, that we can share those updates.
Number?
Number six. Bex 5 and Distress School Grant Approval, before actually the Westwood Modernization Edition Project, and then down below it says "updated since introduction." I think it'd be good for us to share those updates rather than be on the consent agenda. And then we do have some commenters, public testimony, item number four, the Loyal Heights Elementary School Modernization Project. But the other ones, I'm not sure how to approach this because they just say "school construction, modernization, and addition projects," and that can include just about all that's on the consent agenda from items number four through seven.
Would it assist you in making a choice to remove from the consent agenda to hear from Chief Podesta?
Yes, I assume so. So right now, I would say items four and six, but then I'm concerned about number, Speaker number two.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Chief Podesta, but I think that a few words might help us here.
Four and six, but I was talking about Speaker number two. It just says "schools, construction, modernization, and addition projects," and then all of these are modernization, addition projects that are listed in the consent.
I don't know that he can determine the intent of something so broad from a speaker.
Yeah, and so, right now, I'm just requesting number four and six, if that may be enough. Again, I don't know what the speaker is going to address.
Modified since introduction. We did talk about it, the commissioning report, maybe that, and that's, I think, something the speaker wants to speak about, so I don't know what to say about that. And I have to confess, the revision to item six since introduction escapes me, and I don't see it on the bar.
Well, you've got time then, because it's just been moved.
Yeah, if it's been moved, we'll talk about it then, and I'll try to chase that down.
Okay, can I have a motion for the consent agenda as amended with numbers four and six pulled off?
Move approval of consent agenda, less items four and six.
Second.
All those in favor of the amended consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Has been moved and passed. Number four and six will be inserted at C. And again, my colleagues, I'm sure, will remind me if I forget. Okay, so time check here, it is 4:40. Public testimony starts at 5:30. Let's go ahead and have our Board Director reports, please. Who would like to go first? Director Mack?
I think I had my coffee today, normally, not quite ready, but, well, actually, I'm just really excited about the start of school, and it feels like it went really, really well. My own kiddo's buses were on time, and kids were happy, and yay, everybody's back to school. So a very exciting day. I have put in requests for meetings, for community meetings, meeting rooms for my community meetings, one in a couple weeks and one in October. I hadn't scheduled them for a long time. Have to wait to find out if I actually get the rooms before I post it, but those will be forthcoming. I have a Facebook page that you can search, and I'll post there. It'll also be on the board's website once I get it locked down. And I just wanted to, again, thank everyone involved in the four buildings we opened. Those ribbon cuttings were really amazing. It was really wonderful to be a part of that, see all of the alumni that came back for Lincoln. That building is just amazingly renovated. It's wonderful. So thank you again for everyone, and hopefully you get to take a look at the pictures if you weren't present for the ribbon cuttings. And that's all I have. Happy start of school.
Next up is... Director Burke?
With the short time between meetings, there's also short comments, so I want to begin by celebrating the Lincoln links. Yay. Not wearing a jacket today, not wearing a tie, just going with a sweatshirt, going kind of throwback. So that was, I've had the sweatshirt for a while and don't get to wear it very much, and I really wanted to celebrate that. So two ribbon cuttings, Magnolia last Thursday, Lincoln yesterday. Both buildings are absolutely amazing. They're gorgeous. They include a historical component. I was actually walking through Magnolia, and I was thinking, "This smells like the intersection of old house and new building." And it just made me smile because I'm kind of an old house person, but also love new. So I want to shout out to our artists and craftsmen that have made those projects possible. We are grateful for everyone throughout the system, from our community through our, you know, our educators and students that fill the halls, but the people that use their hands and turn raw materials into those masterpieces are such to be commended. And I'm excited for our work around the Student and Community Workforce Agreement to find more ways that we can put our students in those environments and helping with those experiences. I want to thank Superintendent Juno for, in your report, I hadn't realized some of the outreach you had done. I just want to say thanks for connecting with the Nutrition Services team, because I think the intersection of the adult relationships and sharing meals is something that can't be underestimated. So I really appreciate you making that direct leadership connection with them. Start of schools, just based on the indicators in my email inbox, this has been, since starting my term, the, knock on wood, most uneventful, cleanest, fewest bumps start of schools. And so I want to celebrate that publicly, from the leadership all the way through the system, families, community. It's a big lift. And I look forward to hearing what Director Mack had spoken about, the quantitative data about start of school coming up at a work session. We had a wonderful meeting, actually, earlier today, that Director Mack and I had with district staff around the Advanced Learning Task Force and their preliminary results or preliminary recommendations. And I think that for any of my colleagues that have the opportunity to And I think that for any of my colleagues that have the opportunity to meet, I highly recommend that. This is a lead in to our September 25th work session on next steps and policy conversations. And I think that the, it was a really rich discussion about how we serve our advanced learners in their attendance area of schools. But also how do we not disrupt the experiences that they're having now in the existing system? And that's a, there's a lot of challenge, a lot of potential polarity around there. And those conversations are going to take all of us really leaning in on them. So keep your eyes on that one. And in closing, heads up about an exciting event that's in the planning stages with the SPS team. This sort of speaks to what you had inquired about. What is, what is the, I'm not sure how you phrased it, but the specificity around our strategies for college and career readiness. This is a subset of that, a career connected learning partnership summit. This is, we've, many of us have been to events that have been hosted by other organizations around career and technical experiences or worksite learning experiences that are being championed or the heavy lift is being carried by our partners and we're grateful for that. A huge amount of work is also happening here in the district to build those into common systems. And this is our opportunity to celebrate that, to invite partners, collaborators, educators, to hear about the common goals between our K-12 system and what's in post-secondary. And to talk about our strategies and initiatives, multi-year, to get more student experiences in CTE and in worksite learning. And to really specifically ask our partners outside the district to help us lift those students. Put them to work in summer jobs, help us fund programs, offer volunteer staff to help our existing programs sustain, provide material supplies and operating either funding or donations of materials. So there's a lot of different places that the district has intentionally built into its outreach strategies so that multiple different organizations can find a way to connect. I think probably all of you as directors and many of you in the public have had that experience of the question, how can I help? And the answer is, I'm not quite sure. And so the focus of, one of the focus areas of this summit is to figure out, let's answer that question. This is how you can help sign up here and help our students and help our systems. So I'm super excited about that. Likely end of October, still working out exact dates, locations, more information as that becomes available. And then in closing, just to restate my meetings, for the rest of my director term have been set now. September 14th Fremont Library, three to five P.M. October 12th Greenwood Library, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 P.M. And November 9th Greenwood Library, three to five P.M. And other directors as well as staff and obviously the public community are welcome at any and all of those. Thank you.
Next up is Director DeWolff.
Thank you, President Harris. No, I also want to make sure just first as a citizen of the Chippewa Cree Nation of Rockaway, Montana, just to illustrate that I am grateful to, to live and serve here in a city that is the ancestral homeland of the Duwamish people, the Makashtut Nation, and the Sukwamish Nation. We acknowledge them as custodians of this land since time immemorial and as guests and for many of the folks here. As settlers on this land, we extend our deepest gratitude and respect to their ancestors and elders past, present, and future. Also want to just extend some gratitude to the community and SPS for working to bring our resolution to Bailey Gatsert. I'm excited that our conversations and community meetings this summer yielded positive results for the students, families, and the whole Gatsert and Yesler community. And also really excited for Dr. Bruno Cross as the permanent school leader at Seattle World School. I know that that community has been yearning for a permanent leader and so really grateful that Dr. Bruno Cross was selected and really excited for his leadership there. As you know, we did have a very busy summer. As kids were out for the summer, we were still busy in our D7 appointment process. And so I'm looking forward to next week's final community meeting here on Wednesday to do our community forum for the remaining three candidates for, to succeed. Betty, Betty, thank you, at Rayner Beach. And then also just wanted to elevate the great work from last school year on our student and community workforce agreements. Applications for the task force are due by this Friday at 6:00 P.M. And I, excuse me, this Friday, September 6th by 5:00 P.M. And so I look forward to seeing who's looking forward to working with us on the student and community workforce agreements here at Seattle Public Schools. I am currently working on school visits for the 2019, 2020 school year. So we'll have some more updates as we, as we get to go visit our schools in District Five. And last thing, just want to make sure we elevate particularly as we head into a new school year. Students and community, particularly in our emails and other places have been continuing to advocate that we prioritize the completion of policy 2015, which is our vehicle for bringing ethnic studies to Seattle Public Schools. So I hope we begin moving on this critical piece of the puzzle. And then lastly, just wanted to read a story by one of our students from Nathan Hale High School. Her name is Rachel Schmidt, Schmidt, however you say it. And it's called Speak Now. And it goes like this. My words, my words are too much for your flimsy rules, too much for your confining boxes. My words spill out of my mouth, keeping up with my track of a brain. My words speaks truth to me, to me, of me, for me, not for you to judge or critique for I spent so long with my mouth shut, silent, keeping my thoughts contained in the box society made, but I can't do it anymore. So you see, saying Rachel be quiet means nothing to me. I have the right to speak my mind for you do not know what I've been through, the thoughts and emotions, life I had hidden away, snatching the days I should have used to go to carnivals and daydream on hills, the years I lost to my disease, never saying what needed to come out of this mouth, this big mouth. My mom telling me to be quiet in church for the preacher is giving me words, no, I won't be quiet anymore. I deserve you to hear me speak, not for your benefit, but for the respect of my words, no, the appreciation of my words. No, the wild wind in your hair that is the words coming out of this mouth, I need you to hear me this time. In the midst of mania and out the other side, hear me speak, then, only then, will I listen to you. And again, this was Rachel Schmidt from Nathan Hale High School.
Director Gary.
Welcome back, everybody, to our new school year. I'm excited to sit here for the final three months of my term. It's hard to contemplate and every board meeting is going to be a reminder that it's one of my last. So I'm just going to be really centered on what an honor it is and really appreciate these last three months. Had a great summer, took time off, really looking forward to seeing how we move forward on our strategic plan. Really hoping that we share that news across our district and into every building and into every person who continues, to the extent that I feel that the work is not being understood in our city as fully as it can, to the extent that I hear people talk about our district and I feel they're talking about a district that I don't recognize. I think it's important that we all try and get out there and tell the world about the work that we're doing to focus on our students farthest from educational justice. And so whether I sit on this board or afterwards, I'm going to continue to do that. I'm excited, I did mention the anti-racism policy and I'm excited about that. I'm excited to have something to focus on. And it seems strange to have so little time and be bringing something so big. But on the other hand, it took that long to understand what we're doing and for us as a district to be even ready to have that conversation, I think. And it's going to be a beautiful dovetail to 0030 and our strategic plan. And it's going to make us even focus in more closely in terms of how our systems may be tripping us up in spite of ourselves. And so hopefully we will put in place processes by which we can really inspect them once they are identified, be it structural, institutional, or personal racism, so that we can hold ourselves accountable to the work that we have said that we want to do. Because it's really hard work, much easier to put on paper, much harder to address when barriers are exposed. So I invite everybody as we move forward in that process to share their thoughts and feelings about that. So that's going to be my focus, I think, for the last few months that I'm here, that and getting and moving forward on the advanced learning task force. And I want to share some history around that because it was sitting at one of the meetings, one of our work sessions, where the question was once, once again raised, what's happening to advanced learning? And that was early in our tenure. And it was really clear to me, even after a few months, that given the amount of community input that is necessary, the care, the thoughtfulness, getting voices, making sure that we're getting voices from all the different corners, that it wasn't going to be something that this board was going to do from the dais on our own. And so I have to say that I am really proud that once it was identified that that was a really, really big body of work that needed to happen and didn't necessarily align, or it wasn't so obvious at the time, how it aligned with some of the equity work that we were trying to do. And yet I think many of us in our guts realize that there was a huge intersection and that until we addressed that advanced learning, we were going to continue to come up against a stumbling block in our conversations and how our district operated. And so we did that. We allowed a task force to be put into place and do its work very carefully over a year and a half. And that's an immense amount of work and time. And so I just give that history because it was identified as something that had to happen. People wanted something to happen right then and there. And we recognize that that's not how anything that happened under that system would not take. And we allowed this to happen and we've had our input on the advanced learning task force over many, many months. And so that's another piece that I'm very proud of and hope to see come to fruition before we who started that process find ourselves off this board. So I share that. I will continue to have my Tuesday morning coffee meetings at Zoka, the one on Blake Lee, behind the University Village, from eight to nine thirty. This month I will do, be able to do two of them, one on September 10th and one on September 24th. Should I have to cancel for personal reasons, I will post that on Facebook and I will also post events for those on Facebook. There's usually a pretty good crowd of people these days and really great conversations around education. So I invite everybody to come, sit down. I hold mine on Tuesday mornings for those who don't have availability on the weekends. It's the one time during the week pretty regularly that you can have access to a school board member. So again, welcome to the new school year.
Director Pinkham, you're up.
Hi, Katia, I'm a taught squad. Guess first off, just welcome everyone back to school. Hope every, the high schools and middle school and elementary except for kindergarten, right? Kindergarten start next week, that they had a good start to their school year. I was with my daughter yesterday as we had the orientation for the Nathan Hale. So she's now a Nathan Hale Raider. And is ready to start playing basketball is what she wants to play. So again, good, best luck to everyone. Good job to the transportation that we saw that, wow, 1%, only seven buses. Yeah, I just, that was morning. Had six, but still for us to see that on the first day of school, I think is just amazing, you know, that we're making that kind of an improvement and getting the students on school on time. Because I think as one of our people have said that if we can't get our kids at school on time, you know, that's the first and foremost. We need our kids in school learning. So thank you to the transportation departments because I think that success is on you. And unfortunately, you also got to look at when things don't work well, we'll be, who we'll be looking at. So first, congratulations. Also congratulations to the new schools that started. Rick now has his high school in his district ready and rolling and showing the paraphernalia off, yeah. All right, cool. And I wish I could have beat it out to some of the ribbon cuttings, but sorry, I wasn't able to make it. But congratulations to those schools as well. Also, the Urban Education Alliance is kind of doing their annual Billy Mills event and this will be on Sunday, September 8th from two to four at Green Lake, a good chance for people want to go out there. Billy hasn't been running the last few years because he's still kind of recovering, but man, for, he just looks fantastic. He probably because from two to four, Green Lake, they meet up just right by, outside the community center, that's at Green Lake. And they have a fun run, walk with them. So just one trip around the Green Lake and those that run, run, those that rather just take their time walk. But it's just a good time for community. They plan to hand out some school supplies as well to our new returning school students. So I encourage people to come out there. I can't make it, I got a wedding to attend to this weekend on the other side of the mountains. Also want to acknowledge Nancy Bobb, she was actually here prior to her starting. She's one that helped with the sign that we see behind us and that's going up at International Schools. And I told her one goal is hopefully get this sign up at all schools, all 101 schools. So we do acknowledge that, you know, what land we're on and I do appreciate that, that we're saying that. And I go to other meetings now, I'm starting to hear it more often, that people will start their meetings acknowledging the land of the Duwamish, Sukwamish, or wherever they may be, that this is becoming almost common rhetoric that we're hearing. And I appreciate that and I appreciate that Seattle Public Schools does this as well. So thank you for doing that. I still have to schedule my community events, but once I do, we'll get them posted as soon as possible. I will have one sometime in September and definitely October and November. So and I am going to try to make it out, at least Rick's, some of Rick's meetings as well, since we're so close together and some of Jill's. But then I can't make 7:30 coffees, so. And definitely some of President Harris's as well. Actually, maybe that should be a goal of mine, to make every one of my fellow board members' community meetings at least one of them before this ends.
You're welcome to mine as well.
All right. Lasagna?
No. Sorry.
But that's all I have. Katia, thank you and everyone, welcome back to school.
Okay. This meeting is truly about gratitude. And first of all, thanks to my colleagues sitting up here. I might not agree with you, but I love you to death. Community meetings. September 28th, three to five, Southwest Branch Library. October 19th, High Point Library, three to five. November 16th, Delridge Library, three to five. In September, you have a one out of two chance of getting lasagna. And if I don't get there in September, you're eating lasagna in October and all are welcome. We are rowdy, we are thoughtful, and we welcome you. Thanks to the good folks working in this building and all 104. We have agreed, we have agreed now that 104 is standard language. Okay. No more guessing. So says the superintendent. An incredible amount of work has been done over the summer. I think that folks have a misimpression that the lights are dark here and that's, that's absolutely not the case. And to see our four rehab buildings, to have start of schools this morning. Superintendent Juno and I and the mayor and the police chief and council member Herbald and Seattle Housing Authority Director Andrew Lofton welcomed our students at West Seattle Elementary. And there was a pony to boot and a DJ. And it was a huge celebration and it, it made me feel ever so hopeful for the year. Then I went up to see lunch lady Dory at Denny International Middle School. And I was promised a cookie. And Erin, hear me clearly, it was not a home baked cookie. It was a cookie out of a freezer in a plastic wrapper. And that woman can make incredibly good cookies. So as soon as we can bring back scratch baking and the smell of cookies in our cafeterias, I will be forever grateful. And I'll get my food handler's permit so I can help bake them. A huge thanks to our Seattle Education Association members who voted on this contract, who negotiated since May. And a huge thanks to our Seattle Public Schools staff who also lost their summer and put in probably several hundred hours working to an agreement that we can live with. Now, it does take down our rainy day funds, so if you come calling, bring money with you. Because a couple of years from now, it's going to hurt like heck. And I don't frankly expect to hold. And I don't frankly expect a whole lot of help from the legislature. But if you know any legislators, let them know we're coming, because we are not funding the way we need to and in this world-class city. And to Director Burke's comment that we have extraordinary partners in this city, in this world-class city, let's do a full court press for folks to open up their checkbooks, because they'll be hiring our graduates, and they need our graduates to be ready to go. And a huge thanks to everyone around, and notice I didn't say up and down the food chain, because I don't believe in an up and down food chain. Thank you to the crossing guards, to the cement mixers, to our teachers, to our senior staff, to our instructional assistants, to our administrative assistants. We can't do it without everybody pulling the same direction on these oars. And our work is too important not to be working as a team. Couple of other comments. No doubt, folks have listened and read about the 20-minute lunchtimes that the State Auditor's Office has tagged, and as the Superintendent of Public Instruction has tagged. We made a lot of progress a couple of years ago. It'll be interesting to see where we stand on that. And that's, again, one of those individual, 104 buildings, leadership principles, large and in charge, and trying to do best practices. If they don't eat, they can't learn. They don't eat healthy, they can't learn. The Advanced Learning Task Force recommendations are attached to the Friday memo. I encourage you to look them up and start giving us your input. And a special thanks to Chief Podesta, who listened to the requests and pleas from the West Seattle community, who was grandfathered in on Highly Capable, and we got us a school bus, and it's hugely appreciated. And Fred, you're reaching out and answering emails to constituents. I bow down. Thank you. That's the kind of sensitivity, and as Superintendent Nyland used to say, fly to the ball. That is hugely appreciated. Again, it's an honor, it's a privilege. We've got great work to do. When we leave the house at our house, we say, "Carp DM," which is supposed to mean seize the day. We yell and say, "Seize the fish, I love you." We're taking a break until 5:30 until public testimony. And there will be no more breaks, because we're going to get out of here early tonight.